Good morning, everybody. Welcome to episode 225 of Altadena Talks. And of course, this is Tuesday, so it's the Tony Talks segment. I'm one of the hosts, Jamal Smith. I'm gonna pop off and let Tony talk.
Hi, Brian Bacchus. He's gonna pop off too. They're in the background in the green room to help run everything. But super excited. Good morning, everyone. Super excited to have our guest on today, Victoria Knapp, who is currently for the next month-ish, our chair of the Altadena Town Council and has been in her seat for two years. And so, super excited to have you on, Victoria. I'll just say this, you are one of the most gangster women that I have met this year since the fires. And I instantly after I met you was like, oh, my God, I love her. She's so much like me and I absolutely love her. And I didn't meet you until the Juneteenth event when we were walking out to our cars. But I just really liked your spirit and who you are. And I've talked to you a few times and I can say even now, I still feel that way even more so because I reported something to you last Tuesday and you got on it. And by the next day, we had answers. So, I'm super excited to have you here with us. For anybody that does not know Victoria Knapp, I'm gonna let her take it away and tell a little bit about, more about herself, and then we'll get into our organic conversation about Altadena. Victoria?
I guess in terms of, can you hear me now?
I can, yes.
Great. So, in terms of context, I'm a native Pasadena, born and raised. Moved to Altadena 15 years ago when we bought a house here. Was always sort of civically minded. And once we moved up here, I had to learn about the lay of the land in terms of the government up here. I started to attend town council meetings almost immediately when, and I'm sure that the then-chair was like, who is this woman? Because I didn't obey any rules of order whatsoever. You now know my personality a little bit, so I was very boisterous from the audience, let's just say. So much so that a then-council member approached me and said, "I think you ought to run for town council." And the rest, as they say, is history. That was 2017. So, I'm eight years on the council. Two years was vice chair and the last two years is chair.
That's awesome. I absolutely love that. You know, people have asked me this year to run and I was like, no, it's not the time. But I love that. And you know, there's a saying that says, "The squeaky wheel gets oiled." I always heard that growing up. And I'll be that squeaky wheel any day if I need to, especially for the community, especially with what, you know, has happened and what has endured this season, this year. So, I'm good with that. That's probably why, again, when I first met you, I was like, oh, my gosh. Just the personality was like, so like mine. I was like, I like her a lot. So, yeah. So, can you give us some, just some updates of some things that are happening? Because I got, on Saturday, we had our big luncheon at La Manta Park and I had seating for 300. I understand there were about 500 people that showed up. And it was amazing. It was absolutely amazing. I only had gift cards and turkeys for like 70 people because that's how many families actually registered and they got them. But we had Rep. Judy Chu come and Senator Sasha Rene Perez come. And she said something there on Saturday that she announced and I'm sure she talked about with you all maybe a couple of days earlier or something in a meeting, but that she had just secured $8 billion for Altadena. And towards the rebuild and some programs that will allow people to have ADUs put on their property at no cost to them. And so, are you able to shed any light on that announcement or any updates on things that you know that are going on that you can actually share? Even about the park, Charles White Park?
Sure, sure. So, I don't have specific information about her announcement other than she also announced it when we were at the Mariposa Junction shops reopening on Saturday. And I actually have a meeting scheduled with her when she returns from a personal vacation. In terms of Altadena, though, I can share a number of things. So, we are moving rapidly on the residential rebuilding front. As I mentioned earlier, our own home is under construction now. There are almost 400 residential, single-family homes under construction and we're adding about 30 a week to that. And we track those based on the calls for early inspections for foundations. So, once someone calls for an inspection on their foundation, we know that they're going to be underway in some form pretty quickly thereafter. So, that's going on, on the residential rebuilding front. We've had two new businesses open in Altadena. One is the Alta Design Studio, which is on Woodbury. And one is Altadena Cookie Company, which is on Lincoln. And if you haven't been, I highly recommend. The Fluffer Nutter Cookie is excellent if you like a peanut butter cookie. And the Raspberry Brown Sugar Cookie is also really good. They had a little bit of trouble opening. They had a water line break the day of their first reopening and they had to reschedule it. And then we have another business that's hoping to come online. You know, I think it won't be until January of 2026, but that's Bevel Coffee and they're opening on Allen Avenue. So, that's what's going on with businesses. I should also mention that on Saturday, the 29th, Mariposa Junction is returning. So, I know you know the Galloway family. Yep. So, they're opening on, they're sort of reopening that vendor show, if you will, on Saturday, the 29th. As it relates to our parks, gosh, there's so much good news on the parks. I know that, you know, Disney was very eager to get their announcement out and that that caused a lot of concern among residents who have been part of that process at Charles White Park. So, I just want to say a couple of things. One, so Parks has been working very hard doing things that are sort of outside the normal process that Parks would go through in opening parks. And that is to secure funding from philanthropy. They have secured $60 million to help restore all of our parks. That would be Charles White Park, Farnsworth Park and the Eden Canyon Nature Center. They still need $100 million to complete the Davies Building rebuild at Farnsworth Park and the Eden Canyon Nature Center at Eden Canyon. But beyond that, they have all of the funding they need for Charles White Park. And I do want to assure the community that the image that was released by Disney was an artist rendering. It was not intended to be what is actually coming to Charles White Park. That is still under development. And the Disney contribution of $5 million towards Charles White Park will go toward rebuilding the playground, which you know, we had just restarted. We just, oh, my God, we had just reopened that beautiful playground. As well as a splash pad, which is something that the community had wanted for that park, but we couldn't afford. And a community building, which is something that the community also wanted there.
Because we've never had that there. We just had the restrooms.
Yep.
So, now there will be new restrooms, a community building, a new splash pad, which hasn't been there, which is great because when it's hot, the water's going, the kids can play and then redoing the playground.
Yes, that's my understanding currently.
It's gonna be renamed from Charles White Park and be a Disney park. It's just Disney is giving $5 million towards it as we rebuild that park. And they will have the splash pad piece and the playground piece. Okay, good.
Yes. And so, all of the community input from prior to this, all of the artistry and the tranquility along with the soccer fields, all of that will still be part of that park.
Okay, good. That's super important because, again, and I'll just say this, the announcement last week was half-assed. It was before, the Disney part of it, I'll say it, you don't have to. It was before our supervisor made her announcement, which she did at La Manta Park, I understand, on Friday. But she made hers. They preempted her by two or three days, Tuesday, by three days. Because I came to town council that night, like, hold up, what's going on? And my biggest thing was, my concern and many people in the community's concern was, the way it was announced by Disney, Disney was gonna take over, this was a Disney park because they put the $5 million. They didn't say, "We're just giving this to help," right? And we will do some things because if you look at that photo, that rendering, the entire park was nothing but Disney-themed stuff. And so, everybody was like, wait, what the heck? They're just gonna come in and do a park and the county sold us out and it's now gonna be, you know? And so, I'm glad that you had the extra insight because you did mention it Tuesday. You said there's the official announcement will be by Supervisor Berger on Friday. But your understanding was what had been in play for a couple of years prior with the $3 million that the county allocated for it was still going to happen and they would, you know, make clear what Disney's contribution was. So, I really thank you that you are talking about that specifically. Now, when it comes to Farnsworth Park, because Farnsworth is our tract, right? And where, you know, you live, where I grew up, my parents' house is, all that. That one, I also raised Cain about at the meeting. I was the squeaky wheel. And Jonathan Franklin and I are supposed to meet. I gotta connect with him this week because Jonathan is with KDI, right? And he is an Altadenaan and he is part of the planning for Farnsworth. And so, I know that there is a link that's out that people can go and express their, I'm looking for the link now. I know that Jonathan sent it to me in the email, even though I already have it. But, okay, here it is. There is a survey link for, and I'm gonna just put it in the chat so people can see it. And in that way, and I'm not gonna worry about this being a super long link or anything. We usually shorten links and make them pretty and without Altadena Talks. But this is the actual survey link, that FormTypeForm.com/. I just put it in the chat for anybody who's looking. But that survey link, people can go to. And they are asking the community for input specifically on the reflection garden or what they would like to see at Farnsworth. One of the things that when Jonathan and I have a meeting, it's supposed to be him, Blake Jopling and Roostin Wu, all of whoever KDI is, is that I think it's very important. There's two things I would love to see at Farnsworth on the east side. I'm sorry, on the west side of Farnsworth, right? I, this is my opinion, so anybody watching, don't get an attitude or don't get mad about it because this is my personal opinion. We haven't used that upper baseball diamond in a long time. And the fact that now we don't use the lower or the upper because there's not enough kids playing baseball like we used to do and they've consolidated and play over at La Manta on the Dodger Dream Field. My understanding is someone said, oh, they're gonna make that a soccer park. And I said, why would they do that when they're redoing soccer at Charles White? And that's where the majority of people play. I really would love to see Altadena Community Gardens East and build part of it as Altadena Community Gardens for the east side. Because anybody on the east side that wants to go to the west has to go way over there. We don't have anything on our side for gardening. That's me personally. I think part of it, we might be able to, the top part, we might be able to even have a solar farm there, right? That could help Altadena. And more importantly than even either of those, maybe as part of the reflection area, I think we need to have a dedicated Veterans Memorial Park. Somewhere within maybe Farnsworth or in Altadena because we don't have that. And Altadena is full of veterans, full of veterans. I'm a veteran. My father's a veteran. You know, people that I know growing up, their fathers, their parents, whatever. There are tons of veterans and we have never had anything to honor and recognize our veterans. And so, I would love to work with KDI even on that as they're looking at the reflection part, right? That if they in fact do that, let's have a Veterans Memorial there, a wall with names or people could do bricks or whatever. But I'm gonna talk to Jonathan about that and maybe see if we can incorporate that. But that survey link is literally where you can go and look at what the renderings are and give your thoughts because they are asking. And that was one of the things I said at the town hall meeting last Tuesday. Why is it that we have people like KDI or others or Disney and their planners coming in, planning stuff without the full community, you know, input? And a lot of the community, a lot of the demographics of the ones that seem to be left out of the process are black and brown. Because there was a meeting a Sunday and a half ago at the Collaboratory and one of my neighbors I grew up with who's white, she went and she spoke up and was mad because like, where are all the other cultures? It's only us white people over 50 in here. Where's everybody else? And she says, "Some white man got in her face, like, we could take this outside." And she was like, you know, like he was upset. But the thing is, we cannot ignore that Altadena is extremely diverse and everybody should have a say in what happens in our rebuild, not just one set of people. And I know that was a lot that I said, but you know, you can respond and take all the time you need to. But those are the things that I spoke about last Tuesday.
The only thing that I will add to that is that I agree with you wholeheartedly that the issue that we have always had in Altadena and we saw this play out in the evacuation warnings and orders with the fire is one of centralized communication. And because we don't have a repository for information coming in and out, it is very difficult to reach people, especially those that moved here because they don't want to be reached. That's the thing that I think we've learned, right? We know now that there is a subset of our population up here that moved up here to be left alone. So, anytime we try to engage them, they are very frustrated with us in trying to engage them. That having been said, to the rest of Altadena, yes, KDI has been engaged to imagine what the Remembrance Garden at Farnsworth Park will look like. That is the parcel of property that's on Marengo and Concha. It's been undeveloped forever. It's two acres. And those neighbors have tried a million different ways and we could never get to consensus, which I have to say, as a newer Altadenaan, it has been an issue up here. We try to get consensus, right? Especially when something's going in in someone's neighborhood. And we could not get consensus there. So, I think that the passivity or the passive nature of the Remembrance Garden might get us the closest we've ever been. And I do want to note that we really are trying to honor the memory of the 19 Altidinos that are known to have been lost in the fire with some creative and beautiful ways so that that space becomes a place where all of us can go and reflect. I mean, we're coming up on the one-year anniversary and I still can't believe that. I, you know, half the time it feels like this just happened, right, last month? So, I would encourage everyone to find their way to the link and to let their opinions be known about what they would like to see at Farnsworth Park. I do also know from our meeting on Friday that Dodgers Foundation has committed to Dodger Dream Field at Farnsworth Park. Altadena Central Little League is interested in wanting to return to that park to play. And I know that they're the award-winning team from last year or the year before. So, that is underway as well. I think the real issue, the real thing that we're gonna have to figure out is the Davies Building. Because we want to retain its historic landmark status. And in order to do that, we have to rebuild it with a certain percentage of its original rocks and stones. So, I think that is going to be a little longer in coming to fruition. But I think that...
No, it even has to play, right? If it takes longer, even that's okay because it is a historic building. It is the beautiful rocks and everything. Like, I grew up in that building, right? Every summer, we had summer camp at Farnsworth Park and it was day camp and we would go around there. And there's the basement and upstairs. And in the basement, we would play all our games. We had these boards that were care boards on one side. We flipped them. There were the checkerboards, right? And we did all that. And we had like our lunches, hot dogs and all this. And I remember at home, we had Kool-Aid. At the park, they had watered-down Kool-Aid. It wasn't real Kool-Aid. It was that other stuff. And everybody that went there and grew up there at that park, the summer camp, you know, we did water balloon fights and all this. But that was our building. We did our plays there after, you know, our summer camp, if we had a play or whatever. And so, I think even if they have to incorporate the rock, like, build the building and then put the rock on the outside to make it look the same or however that happens, we want that building back, right? And so, if it takes a little longer and they could do the rest of the park, then so be it. But I think that'd be great. I do want to address some of these questions. We're not like running out of time yet because we generally go for an hour. But it looks like Heavenly is on with us today. So, great, Heavenly, glad you're there. She said she was glad to hear and see you on here today. And then there's another statement or question. There's actually a question from her that says, "Who are people calling for the inspection which you all are monitoring, Victoria?" And I did wanna kind of do that again or talk about that too because obviously they're calling inspectors or the county, their builders are. But how are you all tied in knowing that they've called for that?
I would say that we're not that tied in. We're not that tied in. It's a county. I mean, if it had been a situation where it had come before land use, then land use would be tied in directly with county through that mechanism. When it's something that is directed to county, then it is something that county generally handles and responds to. So, I don't have a lot of information on that myself. So, I would say we would need to figure out who at county is responding.
Oh, okay, okay. But then you were saying it looks like maybe about 30 a week or maybe you said a month or something. How are you getting that?
Okay, so that comes through the backend through Public Works once. So, there's no, I should say that, so if you go on to the recovery.lacounty.gov site, right? If you go into where it says permitting and rebuilding, then you go to the permit dashboard. That is where we can see how many new permits are being issued. And that's where we can also see how long it takes the county to issue those permits. And those are the rebuilding permits. One thing that's new there, once you click on Eden Fire, is there's, it shows you where, how many days the, I'm sorry, how many days the permit is sitting with the county and how many days it's sitting with the property owner. When you look at, I think the last time I looked, it was 86 business days to issuance. More than half of those days, it's with the property owner.
Okay, good. Yeah. And as of today too, there are 861 permits issued. I have that bookmarked and I look at it all the time.
And is that the number, Tony, is that the number for parcels or individual parcels? Because there's two numbers there. So, I tracked the 604 because 861, yes. 861 includes garages and ADUs.
Yes.
Where 604 just shows me how many addresses have had permits issued. And Heavenly, back to your question about the inspections, those inspections, the contractor calls for inspection of the foundation. So, whoever is going to pour the foundation, calls for the inspection through Public Works. And then Public Works tracks those numbers. And that might be the only number that we're tracking. I'm not, I need to go back to Public Works and I should do this before I leave to find out if we can get framing inspections as well. Because I think that will also, because there is going to be a lag. I mean, I've seen it myself because we're moving into weather months in Altadena. You know, I had said to someone, if we had only had this much rain last...
Oh, gosh, last year at this time. We've all said it since the rain.
I know.
Okay, God, I can't get mad at you. You know what you're doing. But how come we didn't have all this rain last year? We needed El Nino last year, San Blanino. Okay, so thanks for addressing it.
And if we could just stagger, if we could just stagger the rain now so that some of us can get a little building done in between, that would be great. I'd really appreciate it. That's what's delayed. Yeah, we delayed. We are hoping to, yes. And we're hoping to get our foundation footings poured on Wednesday. That's the hope. But that could have happened literally 10 days ago tomorrow, tomorrow.
Well, you should be clear for tomorrow because there's no rain forecast. Yeah. Wow, okay. And then there's another, my tribe bride says, "How is business for the businesses which are in Altadena? How is business?" I'm thinking, Heavenly, you mean, how is business going for them? Are they getting a lot of business? Are people coming and support? I'm assuming that's what that question means. Do you know, do you have insight on that, Victoria?
And I should, I do have some insight on that. So, one of the things that I called for at both a town council meeting and directly have called for directly to the city of Pasadena and then my plan is to also go to La Cuenyada and out east to Monrovia and to South Pass is that our neighbors in the surrounding areas support the businesses up here. It takes very little for someone from Pasadena to come up here once a week and spend money wherever they spend money to make a difference to that business, right? And so, we have actually seen that. And I do want to shout out a couple of things. So, I made that ask of Pasadena and I want to say that the mayor's office, who provides meals in Pasadena for, I think, 400 families, went to Grocery Outlet in Altadena as a result of the ask and bought the food for those giveaways from Grocery Outlet.
That's awesome because last week, I bought gift cards for our giveaway Saturday and I went to Grocery Outlet and bought 30 gift cards. And I did the same thing. And these gift cards were like $200 a pop. But I wanted to support our local stores as much as possible. So, yeah, I did the same thing.
Yeah. I mean, I think that prior to the fire, we've always had, you know, we're sort of viewed as the sleepy town against the foothills. And depending on where and what part of Altadena you lived in, it might have even been easier for you to get up to La Cuenyada to shop or to get into Pasadena to shop or to go to Hastings Ranch because it's closer, right? To the proximal outskirts of Altadena. But I think that all we have to do is spend a little bit of money in Altadena. So, Saturday, Small Business Saturday, I would, anyone who's listening to this or watches this or listens later should come up to Altadena and support the businesses. Some businesses are doing better than others because of the nature of the business. So, you take a business like Betsy, which is the restaurant on Mariposa and his dinner, he's only open for dinner, but that is seven days a week from five to nine. And he has been booked pretty solidly since he opened. There's been a lot of...
Was he passing in or reservation only?
It's not reservation only, but reservation is recommended. You can do a reservation on resy.com. If you walk in, he really does try to accommodate walk-ins and the earlier you walk in, sort of the easier. I just want to shout out the gnocchi there. I'm Italian. I'm Sicilian. And the gnocchi dish that they do is struf's kiss. It's my favorite.
Okay, good. I've heard of it and I've seen people post it. I haven't been there. But I am going to make a commitment to get up there if I can this week. I'm looking now and it looks great. I've heard of a couple of other things that are really good. I like just that fire that I see on the first, you know...
You know that he has, he only does wood fire cooking. All of the food is wood fire. So, there's no gas range. There's no electric range or ovens or anything.
Oh, wow, that's amazing. I see all the pans, pots and pans on there. That's awesome. So, I'm gonna make a commitment. I'm gonna go and make a reservation for myself one day this week. Oh, it's Thanksgiving week. Maybe I'll do it on the weekend or next week.
Maybe next week. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And support.
And then swing by Altadena Cookie while you're there, while you're up here and get, I had, the day that they opened, I was going to the Pasadena... And then swing by Altadena Cookie while you're there, while you're up here and get, I had, the day that they opened, I was going to the Pasadena um, the Leadership Impact Awards. And, oh, I felt so bad. So I go up there to Altadena Cookie, she has the leak, they're, it, they're, oh, it's just awful. I felt horrible for her, but I got little um, six half dozen boxes for each of the award recipient, award recipients and took them to them. And then I stood up at them and then told everyone to come up to Altadena Cookie Company.
Well, I um, will definitely, I actually recommended them to someone, I was on a Zoom call right before we got on this one, for somebody that's planning an event at the convention center. And she was like, Tony, what restaurants could I support in Altadena? And so I told her um, Perry's Joint, technically just below, but they were.
We claim Perry's, we claim it.
Exactly, we claim Perry's, he's Altadena. But, but the fact that like he, for a month, about three, four weeks, he couldn't operate. And then he also owned the building that Little Red Hen is in. So, and I didn't know that till I was over there talking to him and catering for my um, the, the town hall, the builder's town hall that I had on March eighth at Victory. And he was telling me and I was like, I didn't know that. And he was like, yeah, so lost that building, but I want to rebuild and all this. So that's great. But um, so yes, I told her Perry's Joint, I told her Altadena Cookie Co. I even told her Mia on Lake, I don't know with their Thai food, what they.
Yes, it's very, I, I just was there on Friday. Yep.
Yeah.
I would say that um, the Thai basil chicken at Mia is one of the favorites, as is their chicken pot Thai. Um, so Mia is a great place to go.
Their fried pineapple with the cashews and the, oh.
Oh, so good. Yes, so good. And then, you know, there, if you go over to Lincoln, you could go to Good Neighbor Bar, he is always running specials, they're always hosting a.
Or primarily.
It's, it's, the bar is only a bar, but they converted the parking lot to a sort of a meeting and gathering place. And so now he does, is he brings in mostly Altadena related restaurants to have food there that you can purchase. So I know that Nancy's Greek Cafe has been there. Um, Casa's Tacos has been there. Um, Ferrenzani's does their lasagna up there as well. Ferrenzani's is down by where Home State is, you know, kitty corner from um, Perry's Joint. So there's, he's trying to always uh, have food related to Altadena that you can buy when you're up there having a drink. And I gotta tell you, he ran us, I didn't get to go, but he, I saw a post where he was doing ten dollar martinis. And I thought, God, I wish I could get up there for a ten dollar martini.
A chocolate one or whatever, lemon.
Espresso, whatever.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm not a drinker, but when I go sometimes with friends and they're like, oh, I need a lemon drop or I need espresso or chocolate. I'm like, what? So there are martini, my sister's a martini drinker. And I'm sure anybody that knows about a ten dollar martini would be like, let me get there for that.
Yes, because they're like twenty dollars regularly or eighteen dollars or some stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
Way out of my, way out of my budget.
So you can get two for one up there, basically.
Seriously, yes. But then you also need a chaperone to get home. Because if you have two martinis, it's going to be a drive.
Designated.
Yes, okay, I'll remember that next time you're up here.
So that's good to know and, and us to just continually talk about, hey, we have to get people up into Altadena to support those businesses that are there because it's bad enough that the economy is not the greatest right now and people are struggling all over. But on top of that, for our town that burned down, those businesses that have reopened that are still there, we want to make sure that we go and support them. So even if it's once a month, you go into Altadena to purchase something, even if you go to Webster's, even if you go, you know, wherever, somewhere in Altadena Grocery Outlet to buy your groceries if you can. They've got a lot of stuff still for Thanksgiving, turkeys and smoked turkey and stuff. So, so go and do that. Uh, I bought smoked turkey for the greens there the other night and, you know, Friday night when my chefs were cooking. And so definitely go and do that. Um, and then there's another one that Heavenly says, how does the community get included, be included with what the rehab of parks? So that link that I put um, Heavenly, go to that link because they are asking for your thoughts on that reflection garden and things like that. And, and I believe there was a part where I could leave a comment or something. You may say, hey, I really want to be more involved, this is my email or my phone number, my name or whatever. Do that, because when I talked about it on Tuesday, Hans came up to me and got my information. And the very next morning, he emailed and CC'd Jonathan from KDI and did the introduction. So they are definitely trying to get input from everyone. And he said, we didn't mean for the event at the collaboratory to be um, insensitive culturally, right? Like, we want everybody's input. So I want all our parks to come back, because I've used all of them. I used to live right there on La Fiesta off of Ventura by Charles White and my kids would play there. I grew up at, well, this is a long time ago, y'all, but we had a YMCA on Palm, which has been gone for decades and then it became Winvenidas or whatever, that group home, which is still no longer there and they have all those other things in place. But after they closed the Y, that was where we learned how to swim and all that. Then they built the pool up in La Manta, so then we all went to La Manta to swim. Um, although I went to La Manta for preschool at three years old in nineteen sixty-eight. So like uh, or sixty-nine, but the things that have been here forever for us and that we want to see come back, if we do not voice and make our voices known and heard, then people will come in and plan for us and that's not what anybody in Altadena wants. Um, but is that correct? Or other than what I just said, that link, what else is there that people can be involved in the rehab of the parks?
I do know that um, as it relates to Eaton Canyon Nature Center, there is going to be a long um, survey and public engagement process about what we want to see the nature center look like. Um, I want to also say that they have hired scientists um, and climatologists to determine the, where that building should go back. Right after um, the fire, when I got back to Altadena, I remember saying to our director of parks, I said, Norma, when your nature center buil- burns down twice, maybe we don't put it back where it was, right? We have to put it back in a more sensitive um, aware place. So they are definitely looking at, at that as well. Um, I think that a, a good place to start is with the director of all, or, or with the manager of all the parks. So if you want to know what's going on, um, I can certainly put, and I, I don't have it, but I will send it to you, a link uh, to the email address of the person who's over all of our parks, Miki Yamamoto. And she would be the best person to say, this is, we want to be involved and anytime a survey goes out or anytime there's a community event or a talk or whatever, please let us know. And you triggered a couple of things for me and, and a couple of comments you made. One, I ran into Barbara Shea, who is the owner of Little Red Hen. Um, and you know, she is anxiously awaiting uh, rebuilding as she wants to come back a hundred percent. So I know that Joey is working through the permitting process for bo- both that parcel and for where Altadena Hardware once was. Um, and oh goodness, there was something else you said and I thought about it and now it is in one ear and out the other. Um, but as soon as I recall what it was, I'll remember you. Yep, 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 yep. And I will say that I did have a, a long, semi-long conversation with Ian White, Charles White's son, at the event for the parks. And um, you know, he is solely and almost myopically focused on that park, his preserving his father's legacy. Um, he is very happy that Disney came forward because he, he knows that it's going to allow for things the park wouldn't have had otherwise. Um, and that was what I was going to say. One of the dangers that we find ourselves in is if we want philanthropy to come to Altadena in whatever form, and we do, we are, we are dependent on it, especially because this administration has not approved the governor's supplemental aid package.
Which is thirty million, right?
Yes, which he's actually worked down now to thirty-four billion to make it a little more palatable. Um, and in fact, when Congressman Swalwell was in Altadena, I uh, demanded that he go back with Congresswoman Chu and get them to pass it. If this had been a red state, we would not even be having this conversation seven months later. Oh, it is, it's unconscionable and shameful that that aid has not flowed into Altadena. That haven't been said.
That's about.
We do, we do, we do, oh.
Know it is about.
Let's knock you, that is a tangent that we should go down, but maybe shouldn't go down. Yes, but I will say this, that we really do, I, I take sensitivity around um, the philanthropists that have come here. I know that, you know, um, Fire Aid LA took a lot of heat and it has been um, the, the investigation into the allocation of those funds has been ongoing a long time. But what happens then is it then discourages other philanthropists from wanting to invest. And I believe in transparency and I, I think that what happened, and I don't know this for sure, and this is me speaking as Victoria now, but in the, in the interest of getting grants out as quickly as possible, they just moved very quickly. And sometimes they were not able to communicate where those funds were going. But we know, for instance, that funds went to the LA, uh, the LA County Parks Foundation from Fire Aid LA. And I am trying, I'm demanding the same from LA Rises, from, you know, Magic Johnson and from the Walters Family Foundation. Where is this up to one hundred million dollars? Where is it?
You know what? I want to know, because let me tell you something. I was called very early on because I'm a veteran and because my father is a veteran. And I was told and got other black veterans and said, you're a veteran, you owned a home that burned. Your father was a veteran, he owned a home that burned. I was called and said, Magic Johnson specifically wants to know, they have up to a hundred million dollars that they are going to give to black veterans. Not only, but they're, they want black veterans' information so they can see how many that they can give cash money to, probably to the builders, to help rebuild their homes.
Yep.
So I've contacted Colonel, I got his number in here a- a- and, and said, hey, Colonel, uh, his name is Arnold, I won't say his last name. But where's the money, what's going on? And he went ghost. And so I called my girlfriend, I was like, you put me in touch with them, they talked to me. Where's this money for black veterans? Because if my parents have a gap, my father's a veteran, he's eighty-eight, he's talking about he may not rebuild because he may not be here to see it. I don't want that. I want him to rebuild and be back in his home. And if there is a gap, where's this money that you supposedly raised a hundred million dollars and you want to help black veterans in Altadena? And last I was told, probably about six to eight weeks ago when I asked was, oh, everything's been put on hold. So that might be because there's investigations, I don't know. And I know that we got a lot of flack as a recipient of a hundred thousand dollars from Fire Aid. And what we have tried to explain here, they told us it's so that we can stay on the air for the next couple of years and do what we are doing, being a resource and a part of that communications hub for our town, for the community, right? And so what I have tried to explain over and over to people is, you cannot, whether it's a hundred million, five hundred million, a billion dollars, you cannot as a homeowner, just get that money paid directly to you. You will get a ten ninety-nine, it will become part of your taxable income and you will be eaten alive by the IRS if that's the case. It has to come through grants, through foundations that give you gift cards, that give you, purchase a car for you, that purchase whatever for you. It has to come through the nonprofits and funnel down to you that way so that you are, are not harmed financially by something that you think. A lot of people thought they're raising this money, they're going to give us money to rebuild our houses. That is not the case and it cannot happen that way. If anybody went to a Baygood event or anything else and signed a ten ninety-nine and you got five thousand, ten thousand, you, I mean, signed a W nine, you will get a ten ninety-nine next year. It becomes reportable to the IRS and they're going to expect you to pay taxes on it. So you really don't want that. Even the ones that like, um, I know with, with Legacy Land Project, my, my pastor's project for like a land trust. They have to give money like that when they rebuild their home, directly to the builder to pay for those costs. Otherwise, again, it falls back on you as a recipient, as the homeowner. You don't want that. If money goes to the Mennonites or Hope Recovery or Habitat for Humanity, it's so that they can build your house at cost or at nothing where it does not harm you. Harm to you means somebody gave you three hundred and fifty thousand to rebuild your house to go on top of what your insurance is. And then boom, you get hit with the ten ninety-nine for that three fifty. You do not want that. So I continue to try to explain that here, Victoria, we do, myself, Brian and Jamal. We, we try to reiterate it over and over and people are like, no, that's not the case, da-da-da. And so ignorance is truly just that, the lack of knowledge. And we try to provide that as well, because we don't want anybody having undue harm because they get a lump sum of money to rebuild their house. Go through the proper channels, let it funnel the way it's supposed to, right? Where the nonprofits, because they're a nonprofit, can write things off and everything and give to you and you do not have harm.
Yes, I think that that is such an important message to get out and we've learned it the hard way, right? Because I think that until you are in a disaster or have suffered some sort of a crisis wherein there are funds flowing in terms of aid to help you, you don't understand that. I will say that I didn't even understand it initially either. I did under, I, I got, I got schooled pretty quickly about how those dollars need to flow to other nonprofits. And then those nonprofits make sure that the people that were, are in, that they have their arms around, get their help. But to that point, and I, I think it's important to say this too. One of the benefits of the collaboratory, which is operating at five forty West Woodbury, is that there is an unmet needs ta- table there, it's a, it's a subgroup, if you will, working group. And that determine who has needs and what are those needs? And it's specifically um, related to getting people back home. So that could be renters, that could be people.
Uh-oh.
And you need, I saw, I left and then I came back.
You're right back, yeah, I said, uh-oh, but you're here, so that's needed.
But, and that could be that you need all new appliances or you need all new furniture, whatever it is. And, and going to the collaboratory, meeting with the disaster case manager there and getting connected to the resources that you need, whatever they are. And you, I could tell you this, even as someone who's rebuilding my home myself, I don't even know what's available. I don't even know what's available. And I don't even really know what I need, right? Once we start getting through this process a little further, we're going to really, you know, that's where the rubber meets the road. So, um, and you brought up.
Unmet need that you don't even know is an unmet need yet, until you're further in the process and you go, oh, gosh, I need. And if you can go to the collaboratory and there's someone that says, yes, we can take care of that unmet need because we've partnered with so-and-so and we have that for you, then that may be also that somebody they've partnered with has received grant money from philanthropists or from Fire Aid or whatever, and you still get it that way. Which also would not cause you as a homeowner undue harm because you got it and you have to now report it on your taxes.
And because the nonprofit received the money, they need to get it out to people too. That's the thing. So it's not like anyone's doing anybody a favor. You, if you have a need and they can meet it, they want to meet it. And you made another point that I think is extremely important and this was something that I was tracking fairly early on. And that is, as it relates to our nonprofit builders, Habitat for Humanity, San Gabriel Valley, the Mennonite Builders, Samaritan's Purse and Hope Crisis Network. When all is said and done, they have the current funding to build about three hundred homes all told. And we have to get them matched up with, we have to get our residents matched up with the right nonprofit to rebuild their homes. So again, going to the collaboratory can help get you in a pipeline if you're not already that can connect you to a nonprofit builder that can help you rebuild your home.
There are a couple of comments and then there's another question that I will bring up in a minute. But the comment um, from Heavenly, when I was talking about being a veteran, me and my dad and all that, she said her father is a veteran. So yes, kudos, and that's why I really want to see so many, I want us to have a veteran memorial, a veteran wall, something in Altadena, because we've never had it. And if we're talking about rebuilding Farnsworth and we're in the planning phases and they're talking about this whole reflection area with maybe a pond and a walking path, what better addition would it be to have over there than a veteran memorial? That all veterans maybe, you know, names on walls and there's space on the wall that we could add each year and engrave or whatever? I think that would be phenomenal and think that that's really something that we should have, that's just in my heart. So I am going to tell Jonathan that. Um, and then this one from Marcus Betz saying, great to hear about Farnsworth Park and the building being rebuilt. So many memories were made at that park, including his parents' twenty-fourth and fiftieth wedding anniversary celebrations. Yeah, there's been so many weddings or, or birthdays, bar mitzvahs, after the repasses for funerals. Like, there's so many memories for, for everybody who's ever used Farnsworth Park or the building there. Um, and then this one just came in, it says, uh, the classic cash is asking, what is the town council's role in improving future emergency notifications to the whole town? Or even if there is, right? E- even if it's the town council's responsibility or role in it versus the county and that company or what, what insight do you have on that?
So I will say that there are a number of um, governmental agencies, including. So I will say that there are a number of governmental agencies, including LOES that are looking at how do we improve emergency notification across California for any sort of a, a crisis like this? So, um, gosh, I as a council member would like to see and want the council to be involved because I think that we have a, the greatest opportunity to reach the most people. If you take each census tract representative and they have 4,500, let's say, residents that live in their census tract, it's easier on that level to reach them than trying to blanket all of Altadena. So I should say that the county is looking at it, the state is looking at it through the governor's office. It was again, the day after the fire was one of the very first things I said to Supervisor Barker. Um, and I've had conversations with others since then that we, we have to require you to opt in. It cannot be a, um, a, a service that you can take advantage of if you want to. If you were going to live in a high fire severity zone, if you're going to live in a flood, flood zone for which now we're in because of the debris flow up here, you then are required to participate. And whether we tie that to driver's licenses, whether we try, tie it to, you know, property insurance or to your mortgage or to something that you must otherwise already have. And then you opt into this, we've got to figure that piece out. So, um, you know, I've heard, for instance, when I went up to Paradise, you know, from the mayor there, he said that the first thing that they did, or one of the first things that they decided to do was they installed these, um, these speakers, right? Just like they had the, when we were growing up and you would get the warning and it all go into your desk.
Yeah.
Yes, 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 yeah. So they put them in the six zones that they have in their town. And he said, in retrospect, it was probably not the best way that they should have moved forward. It doesn't serve the greatest good for the most people by, by virtue of how they operate. So now they're looking into something else as we are. So, um, I would say stay tuned on that. Um, I think that we, you know, we did, um, the, uh, after action report, which will, phase two of which will come out in the first quarter of 2026, I think, will have recommendations as to what to do for future. And I, I'm going to be very interested to hear what that independent organization had to say about what we ought to be looking at.
And you know what? I think that this is something that I know we've talked about it here, but really we need to get out, needs to be cleared up. There is a, a misnomer, in my opinion, that people believe that the west side was forgotten about and no notifications went out and only notifications went out to the east side. And I just have to say, that's not the hundred percent truth. Because people on the east side, a lot did not get notifications either. My sister who lived across the street from the fire, which anybody that has watched knows her story, seeing the fire start at 6:30, never got a notification. She lived in the townhouses, her balcony off of her bedroom faced the tower. And so she saw the fire start, went out, told all her neighbors, wound up getting burns from the embers, all that. She never got a notification. My parents on Wapello on Mount Curve, never got a notification. Brian lived on Palm and on Ewing off of Palm. Brian was eating dinner at, um, in Arcadia at Olive Garden and he got a notification, even though he lived on the west side. And so the notifications were hit and miss. It was not, everybody on the east side was notified and everybody on the west side was not. That is not the truth, but that is a narrative that has been put out there. And I have to say, we gotta stop saying that because it divides Altadena. And it also goes along racial lines where they keep saying they forgot about black and brown people on the west side and only cared about white people on the east side. That is untrue and I really, really wish for our community to stay together, that that stops being put out there. Because the notifications, we do know failed, but they failed everyone on each side, all over Altadena. Because again, I know for a fact, my folks, my family, sister and parents on the east and far east side, never got notified at all. And had it not been for my sister seeing it start and calling my parents to say, I'm coming, we're going to evacuate and go to my sons in Old Town because the, the, a fire has started. And that morning, she said in her meditation time, the Lord told her, pack a bag, you're going to need to leave. And so she called my mother and told her the same thing. But Brian, who was on the west side, literally was in Arcadia at Olive Garden, eating. He has said it a hundred times and he got a notification. So, you know, he's a west side resident, but he was way in Arcadia, still got the notification. Other people in different parts got him, other people didn't. It was an absolute failure of the company who does the notifications. And I do believe that once the top, this is my personal opinion, once the fire started and you had transformers popping and things burning, going from east to west, it takes out communication lines. So even if they were sending them and it could have gotten to the west side, this fire was moving from the east to the west and as it burned, communications blew up transformers, burned all of these kind of lines, electrical and everything. Then of course notifications would not come the further west you are because as the fire burned west, it took out stuff. So that's my own personal thoughts on it and analogy on it. But, um, I just hate the fact that we have two narratives out there that are false. One is that they only cared about people on the east side, not on the west side. So notifications were not sent. And the other that is, that Altadena was a historically black town. And I've been fighting that from day one, saying, no, it was not. It was founded by the Woodberries, Mr. Woodbury, that's why we have Woodbury Road, him and his brother. And yes, many African Americans and Japanese were redlined from moving to Pasadena and told to move on the west side. But there are others of us that grew up on the east side. And this was not a historically black town per se, like a, a town that was founded. So those are things I always try to say to clear up because that brings division and we don't need division right now. We need unity and we need to do everything we can to help our town rebuild. Um, are you frozen, Victoria? I think she is. But I know that she's going to come back on. I'm just going to put up this one.
I'm not any longer. I did, I was able to hear you, but you went away. Oh gosh, now you're frozen. Uh-oh.
It's okay. I can hear you and see you.
Oh no. Let's see, are you back? Okay.
Yes. We're both back.
Oh, we gotta love that. It's me. I know it's me. I know it's Altadena. Gosh, what, what a, yes, no worries, no worries. No, oh my God. Well, it's a good thing we're coming up on time that if the internet decides it's going to go down, it's going to go down now.
Yeah, I'm just going to say Marcus Betz says that, uh, you and he go back to Copper Moose Fitness. Thanks for your love and service for Altadena. One love. Again, uh, my tribe rise is saying, is the EFC in full operation to offer survivors what you have mentioned? And are there DCMs and resources for survivors at this time? DCMs is care managers and then.
Disaster case managers, yep.
Disaster case managers, thank you. Or is it a work in process, progress? Are you there? I know Victoria, she's going to pop back in, but okay, good.
The answer is yes, it's in full operation. There are disaster case managers, there are not enough. So they are hiring additional DCMs. I think there's about 60 to 70 now and we feel like we need probably like upwards of 150 of them. And so yes, they are up, they are up and running. Any survivor can walk in and even if the particular service they need is not there at the time, they can be routed directly to the service that they need or come back at a time when they're going to be there. And then eventually it will be fully staffed, fully operational, whatever their operating hours are, which I don't have them right here, but I will get them to you, Tony, so that you can post what the current hours of the collaboratory are.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Victoria. Thanks for the question heavenly. And then this other one. Um, this is, I know Victoria probably can say as well, there's some stuff going on about this. But the question is, is it a matter of fact that homeowners were responsible for paying some 10K to connect with the SCE underground grid in the future? My understanding, and Victoria, you can give yours, is that it's actually about 30,000 however, or between 15 and 30 is what I've heard. But the entire street has to agree to undergrounding, which means, and I tell people this, think about it. If they're going to underground, um, and you are going to be charged that 30,000, do you really want that? But the entire street has to agree before they will just come and underground. Is that what your understanding is as well, Victoria?
That's correct. That's correct. The entire, yes, the entire, the residents along the stretch must all agree. So if one says no, then it's no for everyone and that's going to create some issues for us in town. Yes, the cost is to connect, the cost to the homeowner is, uh, low at 10K. I've heard, um, I've heard too, that it's about $30,000. And their SCE is in talks with the CPUC as well as the state to see if there's some, um, subsidies that can be provided, um, to offset the cost to the homeowner. So I would say stay tuned for that. And I have to also say this about the undergrounding. It is preferential to a town that's in a high fire severity zone to be undergrounded. It will help with reinsurance when we all have to insure our properties once they're rebuilt, as will things like fire sprinklers, defensible space and home hardening. However, what is not going to change is the towers that are in our foothills. And even if we had all been undergrounded here in Altadena, the tower that is likely going to be responsible for this fire still would have ignited and there still would have been fire in Altadena. So that is a problem we're all going to have to, there's a, you know, a degree of risk in living here, um, going forward as a result. But I do think that one of the things we are working on is compelling, um, Southern California Edison to remove their de-energized towers from the foothills.
Yeah, not, not 54 years later and after that, that tower was deemed to have been the cause. Then they came and flew their guys over with helicopters and dismantled and took it down after the fact of the fire that destroyed us. Um, Marcus Betz has, do you have any insight on infrastructure plans? Meaning our water companies are all of that because we know about the three and if they're going to collapse or not into one and all of that.
I would say, Marcus, that it is a work in progress. It is something that the director of Altadena Recovery, Anish Soraya, who came from Supervisor Barker's Public Works team. He was the Public Works Deputy and is an engineer, has his arms around in the sense that, uh, he is keeping all parties talking. I would say that, um, infrastructure is something we are all looking at because, you know, if we're going to underground, right? We're also going to need to then eventually repave all of our streets. We can't just underground power. We want the other utilities undergrounded with it at the same time. That would be all of our telecom, um, which they're resistant to doing at their cost. So those, those talks are ongoing. Um, there is the conversation around water. And if we are going to provide financing or, um, infrastructure repair monies, then do we want those consolidated and what does that look like? And, and, and does it make any sense to do all of the, you know, the repair work on our reservoirs and the lines now? If we're going to consolidate in the future and all of those conversations regarding consolidation are being had with the water providers now, with, um, Foothill Municipal Water District, as well as with the state of California. And what is the best move forward for the majority of Altidinos? So that, because the other issue aside from just the rebuilding of what was here, we know that there is going to be greater density coming to Altadena. I'm not even talking about in, in the, in the form of high density housing. I am talking about the fact that those who sell their lots or their rebuilt homes are likely to sell to families that have children or that have multi-generational families that are living in one house or in the ADU and the main house, right? And all of that is going to tax our water and our power as well. So we have to be looking at that and we know that from Paradise. Paradise, California was a predominantly retirement age community, 55 age, 55 years and older. It has skewed much younger sets with younger families moving back in. So we need to be cognizant of that as we rebuild, not only the residences here, but all of the, uh, businesses that are hoping to come back as well.
Okay, good. That, and I know we're like 11:07. If you have a few more minutes, I do want to hit these couple of, if we can go to maybe 11:15, um, we can stay forever, but I know you can't. So, um, then there was one, okay, Heavenly says again, um, the percentage of people who did not receive notification on the west side was drastically higher. I just want to also say this about the west side, east side. A lot of people think Lake East is the east side. That is not the case. Fair Oaks is the dividing line and anything east of Fair Oaks is east Altadena or east Altadena or the east side. Anything west of Fair Oaks is considered the west side. So again, people there were in between Marengo and Fair Oaks and all of that. And I don't know if we have all the data of who didn't receive on, on the east side, meaning east of Fair Oaks. But I would say it was just a failure and drastically high that Altadena was not notified. Because again, I know many people on the east side, not just my family, but people that lived on Los Flores and, um, Wapello at, uh, Marengo that never received notifications. So we can assume that it was only the west side and keep giving this narrative that it was only. But I believe it was a complete failure for Altadena as a whole. Um, because I've heard lots of people say they never received it, who lived on the east side. But thank you for that comment. And then there's another one that Heavenly has that says, in the seventies, the percentage of black people who lived on the east side was little to none. That also is not true because again, the dividing line is Fair Oaks, not Marengo and not Lake. So if we look at all those, and I know people that bought in the sixties, in the fifties, in the forties, east of Fair Oaks, there were a whole lot of black families. It just depends on where they were. A lot of times, again, people are thinking east of Lake. I can vouch because I grew up east of Lake at Mount Curve. And there were quite a few of us, I could drive you up and down most of the streets over there, but it might've been four or five black families on one block of 20 homes, right? Versus on the west side, west of Fair Oaks, there might've been a block of 20 homes that had 14 black families. So I get that, that there were a lot more dense population of African Americans, Japanese Latinos on the west side past Fair Oaks. And let me just say, some of the hurdles that happened in, on the east side, Fair Oaks and over. I know when my parents bought our home in 68, my dad was an engineer, he was a veteran, he was, I believe it's VA, you know, things like that. And so, but they, they still had to jump through hurdles. We moved in and white families put their houses up for sale and moved. Um, I have a girlfriend whose parents bought on Pepper, north of New York. They found the home on a Friday and back then, in the, in the early seventies, 72, 73, the banks weren't open past 4:30, 5 o'clock on a Friday and they weren't open on the weekends like they are now. These close early. They told her father, if you want this home, you have to give us a $14,000 deposit by Sunday at X amount of time. Well, that was to make it a hurdle that he couldn't get over, right? He went, he called all his buddies because black folks keep money at home, right? Or did back then. And he got that 14,000 to them and bought that house on Pepper and they've lived there since the seventies. So there were hurdles put in place to try to do it without saying it's redlined in Altadena. But, but people were able to overcome some of them. And then Heavenly says she lived on Brayburn and Allen for several years as an adult, which was a completely different community experience than 20 years of living on Glen Rose and Altadena Drive. Absolutely, because Glen Rose and Altadena is the area where the population was a lot more of minorities than on Brayburn and Allen. So absolutely, um, west and east often was identified by how the police and, uh, racial demographics of Altadena. That's fine as far as how they policed and what the demographics looked like. But the dividing line that divides west and east is actually Fair Oaks, not Marengo and not Lake. And a lot of times people automatically say, if you live east of Lake, you're the east side and the other side is the west. And that's just not the truth. So I want to make sure that we provide accuracy always on this podcast and speak the truth. So the west side versus east side, that divider is Fair Oaks. Um, anything else, Victoria, that you can say on any of the comments or anything before we let you go?
Well, what I, what I can say just to, just about that, um, specifically is one of the things we did early on, um, after the fire is we, in, in actually November of 2024, I had had the county and GIS department redo, um, the maps for Altadena so that we would have accurate census tract maps. Not that they weren't inaccurate, but we had lot, ours had gotten really banged up. And so I wanted to have nice maps that we went to events. People could look up where they lived. So they had just done that for us in November, 2024. Then after the fire, I went back to county GIS because we now knew, uh, which structures had been damaged or destroyed and where. And I had them overlay the disaster map on top of our census tract maps. And the census tract that sustained catastrophic losses in terms of, uh, property was, uh, 4602. And that is the portion of Altadena that is on Lake to the west and Fair Oaks to the east, right? And then north of Mariposa, that's 4602. And what ultimately happened, 87%, 87% of the structures in 4602 are gone. And we now know, all these months later, that's because there's a wind tunnel that was created by the way that those canyons formed above 4602. And it blew wind just straight down. So you can really see like exactly how that fire burned in 4602. So just a little bit of information that we were able to get. So once we, in the, in the final analysis of structures, 67% of the structures in Altadena are gone. That's two thirds of this town. Yeah, I know.
That's devastating. Yeah. And, and, and when you look at 57% of Altadenaans being over the age of 60 and you talk about that number of 67% of the structures gone, that's crazy. That's, that's wild. I'm, I'm thankful that you came on today with such insight and such information. Heavenly says, growing up, we were told, don't pass Lake. The west and easy was identified or west and east was identified by the community. Oh, okay. So yeah, growing up, you were told that if you were east of Lake, you were east and the other side was west. But again, that's not the truth. And I want to, want to just state that here. The actual east-west divider is Fair Oaks. And so anybody east of Fair Oaks would be considered on the East Side. The other side would be considered west. And that's part of it, Heavenly. People just say things and if we don't provide accurate information, people are going to run with that forever and they could be saying things that just aren't true or accurate. So where we're saying the West Side didn't get notifications, people that think of west of Lake as the West Side, no. A lot of people that were west of Lake, but east of Fair Oaks that were considered on the East also didn't get the notifications. So that's why I say I think it was a failure for all of Altadena. And that's very, very, very unfortunate. So somebody said, can you share the map?
Toni, I see the map. I want to say we had posted it to the Town Council website, but I will make sure it gets posted there. It's a, it's a very large file, so it's very hard to just share out. But let me find it and have it pinned on the Altadena Town Council website. And I would also say that if you go into the collaboratory, even though the, there's a gigantic wall map of the devastation, even though that's not broken up by census tract, you really can see when you look at the, the portion of town that's between Lake and Fair Oaks, just how much of it is gone compared to other parts. So that's a good visual representation, but I will get the map up on the altadena town council.org website.
Thank you. Yeah, I was over there last week. I had to go talk to Michelle White and I noticed soon as you sign in and then you walk in to your left, you turn, you go, oh, that map is there and it's huge. It takes up that whole wall, but it shows like the red dots or the pins basically of this is here, this was here, this is what was destroyed. So anybody that wants to go over there, 540 West Woodbury Road is where the Eaton Fire Collaboratory is. And you can walk in, you know, during the week and, and get whatever you need from whomever, the organizations that are in there that are there to help. So it's there. We know there's a rent or lease until May of next year. Hopefully it's extended because we got some clowns trying to bring another self-storage into the town that we really don't need because we have public storage right around the corner. So, you know, hopefully it can stay there because this isn't something that's willy-nilly that we can say, okay, the collaboratory, we need to collapse now in May. It's gonna need to be there to benefit people for probably five to seven years. And I know Core is, is looking at bringing in a building or building something that, you know, could also serve as that, but we've got to make sure that the resources are here for people long-term. Yes, even if we're at 400 or 500 building right now and do 30 a week or, or 120 a month, we're still looking at upwards of 5,800 residential properties. And then the other portion of it being our business district. I, obviously our houses, people can individually do what they want. I want to be super involved in the park stuff and make sure that, you know, they're hearing from us and we get people on here. I'm gonna try to bring Jonathan on so he could say what KDI is doing, all of that, and how people can get involved and they can hear. But also I think our business district, we've got to be very mindful of those that want to come in and totally change Altadena, especially Lake Avenue. Because I've had people, even a guy I brought on here and I was arguing with him like, no, you're not doing that in Altadena. Cause he was like, well, we want to put in a bunch of subterranean parking and then mixed-use businesses on the bottom with apartments on top. And I was like, we don't want that. That's not Altadena. You're trying to make us a city and we don't want that. So quit trying to come in and say what you all want to do. And I think that that is so important, Victoria, that people, developers, before they get permits or anything from the land use committee, they need to be saying, no, 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 or you do what we want. And we know we have Altadena community standards, so they can only go a few stories high.
So high, yep.
Right. But people want to come in and change that and make it where we can't see to LA or Catalina on clear days and just do what they want to do. So we've got to stay on top of things and stay together. So I would encourage everybody, just like you're on here today and I'm thankful so many have come on and engaged, continue watching Altadena Talk, spread the word, whoever you want us to bring on, tell us and I will get them on here. And then on top of that, go to our town council meetings. They're only once a month on that, what is it, the second Tuesday? Uh-oh. It was last Tuesday. So that's, is it the second Tuesday, the town council meetings?
It's the third, the third Tuesday of every month and our land use committee is the first Tuesday of every month, always at seven o'clock.
Okay. So yeah, that's we, you have to, we have to show up, right? And so if we have the opportunity right now to talk about it and to say, because also the town council can't do a whole lot if they don't hear from the community. The, the land use committee can't say, we don't want this building here or we don't want this here if they don't hear from the community. So that means if you gotta go and be like Victoria and I have been squeaky wheels and I will continue to be, and if I gotta show up every first Tuesday for land use and every third Tuesday for town council, this is our opportunity to show up and tell exactly what we feel should be told or said or whatever. And, and so that's what I want to leave with is please come out, please go to Altadena Town Council, is it .org?
.org, yep.
.org, see what's going on, keep yourselves involved. And that's how, as we become more civically engaged and involved, we can move the needle towards what Altadena wants, not what everybody from the outside wants. Is that right?
That is right, that is right. And I can see some of the comments in there that yes, the town council meetings are streamed live through the Pasadena Media YouTube channel and the recording is posted there as well after the meetings. And our land use committee meetings have been virtual. And the December meeting, which is coming up, I think next week, let me just check my calendar. It's whatever Tuesday is next week. Yep, that will be virtual, that will be virtual as well. And there will, that's on the second and that's at seven o'clock. And we stream those through Zoom, which we will post the link for that before the meeting. So anyone who wants to participate or watch can do so. And I would say this about the Woodbury planned project there, that there will be another opportunity for the community to weigh in at the, I think it's going to be the January land use meeting and/or town council meeting for the 1,200 unit self-storage unit that's being proposed there for 540 West Woodbury. And when it goes to public hearing, which will be downtown, I think the developer is trying to get it scheduled for March of 2026. There will be opportunity for public hearing there. And at that, by that time, the town council's land use committee will have done its due diligence, which is surveying all of the residences and businesses within a thousand feet, getting their opinions. And then we share that with regional planning as well. And there has not been any support amongst Altidinos for that project yet. So please make your voices heard.
Yeah, and that's what it's about. We cannot let people come in and do what they want in our town without us saying this is what we want. So again, we have public storage right up on, on, on Lincoln, right above that. We don't need a big, another big, huge space that is not really beneficial like the collaboratory is right now or anything else could be for us in Altadena. So come to the town council meetings or get on the live calls and make sure your voices are heard. Contact your census tract member and voice your opposition. Email them and say, hey, this is where I live. Tell your neighbors to do it. I do not want this. And then when public hearing happens, do the same thing. Show up at the public hearing meetings. Don't have to be rowdy. Show up and say, hi, this is my name, this is where I live and I'm opposed to it, right? And that's it. And then go on to the next person or whatever that looks like. But we can be civil and we can be an amazing town that says, hey, this is what we don't need or want versus this is what we do. So before the county issues anything, they will take it to public hearing. And if enough people are opposed and say no, then they're not gonna issue a permit for that, a land use permit for that. So Victoria will definitely keep me in the loop on everything. I will also know because I'm getting more involved with the town council and I will be at these meetings. And then Victoria, I have this question before we let you go. This hopefully is the last one. You, your term ends December, is it 16th?
Correct.
And I don't mean to get you emotional about that because it's like right after the fires, but I believe you need a break because you've been an awesome chair. And then with the fires on top, you've been just going, going, going and doing so much. But what are your plans? And you probably need a little bit of a rest. I know you'll still show up at the meetings, but what are your plans after that? Do you have any? Have you thought of maybe running for county supervisor when Barker is out in a year and a half? Or have you even thought about your next steps in, in the civic engagement arena? And if you have and don't want to say nothing right now, that's cool too.
I, I love how this is the, I love how this is, this is how we're gonna leave off this, this. I love how you just hooked me right in there. I will say this, I will say this. And contrary to what anyone might say about me, I have never wanted to be the public face of this disaster, nor have I wanted to be the person that was out there representing Altadena. But I found myself reluctantly in that role and I took it on with great humility and pride for this town that I love so dearly. And I didn't grow up here and I love it more than I love Pasadena, which is where I grew up. So I will say this, I have, I am, prior to the fire, I was looking to return to the workforce. So I am again, looking to return to the workforce. I will say that how I might return will look different than probably what it would have a year ago. I do have this crisis management experience now. I do have disaster responsiveness experience and I do have a passion for connecting the people in Altadena with the resources that they need and keeping the spotlight on Altadena. I've learned very early on after this disaster that the more we talk about Altadena and the more that we keep it centered, the better for all of Altadena. And I know Altadena feels left out a lot and forgotten a lot, especially as compared to some other municipalities that may get more attention. So I will continue to advocate on behalf of Altidinos and use my own experience to better inform the county about how to make things better. So I, I, all of this to say that I'm looking for employment. So if you're looking to hire someone and you know me, please reach out. And, you know, we'll see what that actually ends up looking like. I would like to take the time from December 17th to January, whatever that is, off and focus on, I don't even know, recharging my own personal battery, I think would probably be the best way to say it. But you will definitely expect to see me in and around town and at town council meetings. It'll be hard for me to just disappear.
Okay. I know it will because, because you're too engaged. So, and I probably wouldn't let you anyway. I'd be texting you like, girl, where you at?
Where are you?
Right.
Listen, if you, listen, if you don't see me around, you, please check in with me because something's happened, something is happening.
I will. I'll be like, Vic, what's going on? Like, where you at, girl? No.
No, do, 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 do.
Fabulous hour and a half. This was a fabulous hour and a half. I will say that twice, back to back. I am so thankful that, look, you guys, when I was at the meeting last Tuesday, she was like, when you bringing me on the show? Because we've been talking.
I did say that. We've been talking about it for months.
Right. And that's how like, I said, hey, and she was like, hey, when you bringing me on the show? And so I was like, next Tuesday, because I got a spot. She was like, okay, let's do it. So I was so glad because this is long overdue. We've been trying to connect and do some things and just hadn't. And so I'm super glad that that's how you asked. I'm super glad that you said yes at that point and that we got you on. And then the funny part is in the town council meeting, I said, let me do it right now and send you a placeholder so it's on your calendar and mine. And I did that. And you guys, I forgot to send her the link to the show until five minutes to 10. I was like, oops, my bad. I texted her like, just sent you the link. So, because I was waiting like, where's she at? You know, I usually have people come on like 10 minutes before so we could check audio visual and all that. And at 5:20, I was like, oh, it's blank. I never sent it to her, the, the link. So super glad that we got that squared away. And though we had a little technical challenges, we are good. Well worth sitting in on this hour and a half. And I so look forward to bringing you back after you are out of your role and doing something else, couple of months or whatever. But, and you already know, you have my number, call, text me when you need me for anything. And I just, I'm, I'm full right now because you are so great and have done so much, obviously for the years that you've been in Altadena, but then specifically after this fire. And I thank you with all my heart, like the community does. And I look forward to seeing what's next for you. And I think you're frozen.
Again.
It's okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much for your care and your, I can see your, you're, you're, you're half frozen. You're half frozen. But I just saw that Esther Lopez is here. I thank you, Esther, for the very kind words. Esther and I have children at Elliott Arts Magnet together, so I appreciate that. But I do, I appreciate the kindness that people have extended to me. I have not minded the criticism. I understand that it comes with the territory, which to your point about running for supervisor may prevent me from ever seeking out higher office. I look at those and I'm not quite sure I have my, that my skin is that thick. But I, I really do appreciate you, Toni. I'm so glad you're mad and that has been, go ahead.
If you run, I'll be like, you chief of staff, whatever, because I got thick skin and I'll have your back, girl. So whatever you need, if you decide to run, be like, Toni, we're in this together. I'm gonna be like, all right, I got you. I'll be your shot.
You heard it here first. Toni is going to be my, she's gonna run interference. She's gonna run interference, but I appreciate it.
No problem.
And I think, I, you know, listen, I want to just say a very heartfelt happy Thanksgiving for, for Altadena and everyone and for you and your family. This is going to look like a little, a different, you know, Thanksgiving. I, I sort of wanted to cancel all the holidays, but I have kids and so you can't really do that. So I, I wish, you know, prosperity. We're going to have an Altadena 2.0 and we are going to be stronger and wiser on the other side of it.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you, Victoria, for your time. Hopefully all your questions, all the audience's questions got answered. And she said she seconds that motion, Toni. All right, Esther, we got her back. Let's do it, whatever we gotta do. So yeah, I look forward to next steps. And I might get a call one day like, Toni, I'm throwing my hat in the ring. So you coming along and I would be like, yep, what you need me to do? And I'm dead serious when I say that. So let's go for whatever the future holds. We all have been thrust into, I think, a new purpose for our lives. Nobody ever thought we'd be the face of anything. I never imagined being on a podcast or getting awarded by Ebony Magazine or, you know, all the, or people walking up to me going, oh, your Toni Talks. And I'm like, no, I'm just Toni, you know? Or people seeing my parents and going, your Toni Talks parents? And they're like, uh, okay, you know? So I never imagined that. And to me, that brings, like you said, the humility. Because if somebody has watched or heard my voice or seen my face and knows that I'm out there for Altadena, that's a very humbling thought or experience for me because what I do is for my hometown, right? And I want to, if I need to be the voice for it in any way, shape or form, I'm willing to do that and to make sure that we're just better in the future. Well, I'm gonna say toodles.
All right, thank you so much for this time. Toodles!
Toodles, right. Like I always say. All right, bye, Victoria. Thank you. I know Jamal will pop back in. We'll do a couple of announcements and end our show in a few minutes. Talk to you soon, Vic. All right. Hey, Jamal, welcome back to the stage.
Hello, wow, that was pretty, pretty informative, very, very good conversation.
Yeah. It, it was really, that one really energized me and I'm so glad. Hey, Brian, welcome back that she was on today. So Marcus talking about that would be awesome team, Toni, Victoria, let's make it happen in time. Hey, whatever is in the future that Hey, whatever is in the future that's, uh, purposed, we just gotta do. Uh, that's how I feel now after what we've done on this particular show and how we were kind of put out there. Um, you know, whatever we need to do for our town, I'm willing. So in the long run, let's see where it goes. Amazing. Yeah, Victoria is amazing. And this was a really, really good show. I liked the conversation. But when we first met, I was like, oh, I like her right there, just from her conversation and her personalities, the way they, they, uh, mesh. And so I'm super glad we had the time with her today.
I remember this when we were at the boxable event and she took over as the, uh, MC and she goes, if I'm talking, then you shouldn't be. I laughed so hard. That was funny.
That's crazy.
I guess neither one of y'all found that funny.
I giggled. I giggled. I happened to.
No, say it again. I'm sorry. There he goes. There he goes.
I'll take that as my cue to do the, uh, the announcement. I'm only doing the, I'm only doing a few of them. Uh, here we go.
You know I hate listening.
Oh, so I'm just gonna start with the, uh, the things that are happening locally. So every Monday and Tuesday, there's the Freedom Shop. It's for Eaton Fire survivors. It's by appointment only. So you have to scan the QR code or go to tinyurl.com forward slash Harambe Freedom Store, uh, in order to register. It, uh, it's taking place, like I said, every Monday and Tuesday from nine to four at Harambe, which is at 1609 Navarro Avenue in Pasadena. Items vary from toiletries, home essentials and much more. Also, we have the LA County Department of Mental Health, which has Eaton Fire Support classes that are available. The topic being dealing with, with disaster and how to cope and thrive. These classes are going on now through November 29th, except for Thanksgiving Day. They're taking place at Loma Alta Park, which is 3330 North Lincoln Avenue in Altadena. They're on Tuesdays, uh, from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. And then Thursdays and Saturdays from 12:00 noon to 1:30 PM. If you'd like additional information, please reach out to Dr. Michelle Majors at area code 6263, uh, I'm sorry, 4302930. Then we have the Free Medical and Mental Health Clinic at the Eaton Health Village, which is located at 1280 East Washington Boulevard in Pasadena. They take place from 12 to 5:00 PM. They do accept walk-ins or you can also call them at 951-595-7032 for questions, as well as to set your appointment up. The primary services provided are medical consultations, medication refills, mental health services and case management. And once a month, they also have vision and dental services. So the folks at the Hollywood Food Coalition are having their latest distribution happening tomorrow. Uh, it'll be from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the main library parking lot at 600 East Mariposa Street in Altadena. Um, again, 11 to 12, supplies are limited, first come, first served. And if you can, please bring your own extra bag. And then Healing Together Support Group has free grief and loss support. Uh, it's a group for the LA fires. It happens every Wednesday from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. It's at the Maxwell House, which is located at 55 South Grand Avenue in Pasadena. And it is also virtual. Uh, it's available for all adults who were impacted by the recent fires and it is free of charge. If you'd like additional information, please reach out to Joanne Diaz Kogle at 818-395-8066, or you can email her at joann, J-O-A-N-N-E-K-O-E-G-L at gmail.com. And then every Wednesday, we, uh, the Juicy Little Fines thrift store has the We Out Here Market. It is from 12, uh, to 3:00 PM at the world famous Fair Oaks Burger at 2560 North Fair Oaks, uh, Avenue in Altadena. There's gonna be, uh, free farmer's market, free vegan hot meals, free groceries, hygiene products, thrift store pop-up, legal advice, free loving prayers and much more. Please bring your proof of Altadena residency, as this is only for Altadena residents, and bring your own bag. It should be, should you be interested in getting additional information of things from, uh, Juicy Little, uh, Fines thrift store, you can reach out to juicy little.org.
We out here. Now let me just, uh, say one more thing about this flyer. I talked to, uh, Crystal at our event on Saturday. And she was adamant about letting everybody know that they are open the day before Thanksgiving. And they do have a lot of spices in case you all need spices for your.
That's the next slide. Go for it. I mean, go ahead. I'm just bringing it up. Finish what you're saying, B.
I'm done. I didn't know you had a slide up for it. I was.
Okay. Um, so in addition to the normal things that are there at the We Out Here Market, they also for this month are having, um, free seasoning and spices that are being given away. Um, they have everything from everyday essentials like salt, black pepper and seasoning salt to herbs and greens, uh, heat and kick like cayenne, crushed pepper, chili powder, paprika, garlic and onion powder and salt, chicken, beef, tomato, bouillon and to, uh, taco and gravy packets and Italian seasoning, as well as baking and sweet spices such as nutmeg, ground cinnamon, white and brown sugar, powdered sugar and vanilla extract. If you're interested in donating, please scan the QR code, as well as if you're interested in volunteering, they do need help. And this again is at Fair Oaks Burger, 2560 North Fair Oaks Avenue in Altadena. Sorry about that, B.
It, it, I wasn't mad. I just didn't know you had a slide for it. That's all.
Oh, for the seasonings, yeah. But I, I didn't know, I was, you, you didn't finish your statement. So they will be open tomorrow. In case people thought that because it was the day before Thanksgiving that they wouldn't be, they will be open for the regular We Out Here Market, as well as for the free spices and seasoning giveaway.
Couldn't have said it better.
The folks at, uh, the, the LA Laundry, oh my goodness, I'm flushed there now. Okay. So the free laundry services are continuing on Wednesdays at the Altadena Seventh Adventist Church at 2609 Lincoln Avenue. The drop-off is from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Once you come back after you've dropped it off, your clothes will be washed, uh, dried and folded. It's a, a great service to have. And then something that was mentioned earlier today and, um, it's definitely something you want to take a look at is the Altadena Small Business Market, uh, at Mariposa Junction is having, uh, kind of a grand reopening fun-for-all type of event. Uh, it is taking place on Saturday, November 29th. It'll be from 12 to noon. It's Mariposa Street between North Lake Avenue and El Molino in Altadena. Uh, the street will be closed for the event. It's fun-for-all with a wine garden, live music, food trucks and pop-ups, uh, Kids Corner, arts and crafts, and unveiling of a global, uh, Angel Wings Project mural. So definitely go check that out, you guys. It's gonna be very, very, uh, well attended, I would imagine. And definitely needed for the business community of Altadena. And we are back. So with that, I guess our, we'll wrap it up. Uh, episode 225. We had, uh, Tony had Victoria nap from the Altadena Town Council and had a wonderful conversation with her. Brian is, uh, frozen on purpose.
Frozen.
I said on purpose.
Right. He was like.
Mm-hmm. Let me get that nice picture. Got that. That's a great image. Got that one too. It's, it's a good thing. So, um, happy Tuesday, you guys. Hope you have a great rest of your Tuesday and tune in with us mañana. Where it'll be, uh, Wellness Wednesday.
Wait, hold on before we leave.
Thanks, everyone, for being here today to, uh, for this conversation with Victoria.
All right. I'll hit the button. Peace out, you guys.